Everybody, and I'd like to welcome you to the March 21st Board of Selectmen's meeting. And our first order of business will be Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to have Selectman Gross.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First order of business is acceptance or correction of public and non-public minutes of 3:14, 1:24, 1:31, 2:14, and 3:11. Whatever your pleasure is.
I'll make a motion to accept the public and the non-public minutes of March 14th.
There's a second.
Second with corrections.
Corrections.
Page four. First paragraph. After we, after it states, "We can take an opportunity for our mechanic to look at ambulance three." Then it says, "It might be more valuable if it's retained by us. We want this style because we can mount a new body on the chassis." That conversation is mixing two vehicles. It appears that it's referring to one. We were, the context there is we were looking to see if the older vehicle is worth keeping as a spare or backup or whatever you, or have you. Because the newer vehicles, we will be replacing the boxes on the chassis. So we wouldn't have an opportunity to have a complete vehicle after this.
So would you maybe like to add, we want the newer style with the purchase because we can mount a new body on the chassis? Like make that identify going with the new ambulance? Because that's really where you're going, I think. The comments that are put before that are proper to refer to ambulance three. But the last sentence where you said, where it was said, or I wrote, "We want this style because we can mount a new body on this chassis."
And the Chief O'Brien's statement after that was referring to the new vehicle.
Yep.
As well as the next statement. And then Chairman Gross's statement is referring again now to the existing vehicle.
Do you want to have a new paragraph there and have me refer to the comments as pertaining to the new ambulance?
Yeah, maybe you can move Selectman Gross's comment and my comment after the, "It might be more valuable if it's retained by us." So that the, all the statements pertaining to the existing vehicle are together and then the new vehicle are following.
So I'd break it to a new paragraph.
That's all I have. I have page five. First sentence in the bottom paragraph. That percentage instead of being 18.4 should be 14.8. Any other corrections? Any other discussions? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Do we have the other minutes? Do we have any motions? We need to, a motion to approve the non-public minutes of January 24th and January 31st.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Now the motion?
Motion to accept the non-public session minutes from February 14th, March 11th,
Almost more.
Second. And March 14th.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Announcements. We have two announcements. One is from the Gophstown Police Department regarding another one-day collaborative effort with federal, state, county, and local law enforcement to remove potentially dangerous substances from our households. The National Takeback Initiative will provide a united, unified opportunity for the public to surrender pharmaceutical substances and other medications to law enforcement officers for destruction. This will occur on Saturday, April 30th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you have any questions, you can contact the Gophstown Police Department or Gophstown Town Hall. Another announcement is Bow Wow Bedford. It's a Bring Your Family and Doggies for a Fun-Filled Day at the Animal Rescue League of New Hampshire on Route 101 in Bedford. And it's Saturday, April 2nd, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's Bedford and Gophstown Town Dog Licensing. Microchip clinic by appointment. There's a discount for Bedford residents, unfortunately not Gophstown residents. Rabies vaccines on site. They're $10. Face painting. There's the shopping and raffles. And T-Bones food. I guess it's yum if you're a dog. Okay.
Are you sure the face painting is for children?
I don't know. It might be for dogs. Why don't you report on it? Let us know. Okay. Next item is public comment at 6:10. You see a few members that are here, but if anybody's here for public comment, now is your time. People shaking their heads negative?
We're having a session later for traffic signs.
So. Our next item is 6:15 DRA proclamation for their 100th anniversary. Are you expecting anybody else or? We'll be a couple of minutes early if that's okay. Okay.
Well, you want to stand right here?
We can just stand.
I gotta have that flag.
Don't hit the camera.
Will it fit?
Oh, you're wonderful.
I'll fix it.
That's good. This is Jenny, our regent.
How you doing? And your proclamation?
Oh, give it to her. She's the one.
And I will read that. It's a proclamation from the town of Gophstown. Whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution in New Boston was organized as a local chapter on March 21st, 1911. And began pursuing activities such as observing Flag Day, participating in Memorial Day exercises, decorating the graves of Revolutionary War soldiers, and recognition of U.S. Constitution Week each September. And whereas, early on, the members looked for ways to engage children in patriotic observances and awareness, such as saluting the flag, speaking, and essay contests, promotion of American history classes into schools, and the annual presentation of the DAR Good Citizenship Award. And whereas, the chapter successfully grew in membership in the ensuing years with a corresponding expansion of its activities carried out in support of their motto, "God, Home, and Country." The members also pursued learning the history of women in the American Revolution and other member history education. And whereas, the New Boston Chapter celebrated their half-century mark with the placement of the DAR plaque on Indian Rock in Gophstown, marking the old Indian Trail from Long Pond Road to Amundskag Falls as evidence of their continuing promotion of local history. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Gophstown, County of Hootsboro, State of New Hampshire, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim that March 21st to March 27th, 2011, be designated as the New Boston Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution 100th Anniversary Celebration Week. Throughout the Town of Gophstown, New Hampshire, and I urge all the citizenry of the Town of Gophstown to pay special attention during that week to the special qualities of this patriotic organization and the remarkable achievement of the 100th anniversary of their local founding, given under our hands and seal, signed by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're so amazing.
Hundred years. Bow Wow. Congratulations.
We weren't founding members. Just to let you know.
Well, that's what we always have to hear from Steve. See, so there was somebody here that's been longer than me.
I don't think so.
Would you like anything special that you want to inform anybody of for this?
I'd just like to let everybody know that the New Boston Chapter welcomes people from Gophstown to Boston, Ware and Dunbarton as members and Henneker. And we do things with Gophstown Schools as well as Ware Schools as far as our Good Citizen Award goes. And if anyone is interested in joining us, we do have some, a registrar who's very good at helping you find your roots. You need to have a patriot bloodline to a patriot in the American Revolution. If anyone is interested, let us know.
Okay. We'll do that.
I gotta tell you all something interesting. You all know Elizabeth Byron, I'm sure. Well, her revolutionary grandfather is buried at Hillside Cemetery in Grassmere. So when she gets home from her trip, we're going to take her down there. And of course, she'll put a flag. And her family will be there to take a picture around the tombstone.
Great.
So it's going to be a fun thing.
Super. Terrific.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
I wish you success for your second 100 years.
Thank you. Well, we've had a successful experience. Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Nice to meet you.
I expect to see a dare float in the 250th parade.
A dare float.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
D.R.A. Yeah.
Of course.
Actually, I think we're planning on one. Yes.
Yeah.
Have till October.
We're trying to get, try to get the.
Official photographer.
We get the Historical Society is going to get them involved in the parade.
Okay.
We're going to get.
I went to a tee.
Lodge is going to go.
He came into our park to reconvene doing the thing.
Oh, we're going to have fun over here.
Right.
Take it easy.
Still waiting on your donations, Steve.
I think you already received it, sir.
Okay, we're running a few minutes early. If it's okay with everybody, we'll move on to the Administrator's Report for a moment.
Very short this week. You have a weekly meeting schedule in your package. Tuesday, EDC is meeting in room 106. And Wednesday at 6:30, you have HTC at Grassmere Town Hall. Seven o'clock Conservation Commission here in room 106. And Thursday's Planning Board here in room 106. Your consensus folder tonight, we did add something that was prepared today, and that's the MS-2 that we need to get up to DRA. It's a report of appropriations based on the vote at town meeting. You also have your AP warrant, employee status reports, a right to inter, notice of lien, Trump and Collector bargaining agreement. Do not believe the dispatcher signed one got in here today, so that's not in there.
Which one?
Dispatch.
That one's not in there?
Yeah, I didn't have a signed copy.
Okay.
Hopefully you'll have it next week. And the annual highway safety grant.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the consensus folder?
There's a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. And you have a draft press release at 6:08 in your packet. Any changes?
Everybody have a chance to read it?
No.
Is there anything in it that you want to change? No? I guess consensus is.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Consensus?
Want to read this?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you. That's it. I told you I'd be short tonight.
Okay.
I'll get you there, Andrew.
As far as Selectmen's discussion, I only actually heard back from one person. But also, when thinking about this, we have a couple of things that we do need to, we do need to discuss. And one of that is in non-public, which is our negotiations. So I wanted to hold off on any of that appointments or the changes to committees until we have that discussion. Okay?
Yes.
So which we can have that later tonight. Hopefully we can conclude on that. So we'll hold off on that. And I don't know if there's any old business that we have.
Just one. Yeah. Just looking back last year. I'm going to go back here. In August, we discussed Lund Lake Parking. And at the time, the consensus of the board, we were going to limit it to residents only. Police chief was going to meet with the school and come up with some draft language for an ordinance. And we kind of haven't touched it since then. And the summer will be upon us shortly, especially if we have to have public hearings and things. So I just wanted to bring that back up so we can.
I'll look into that for next week.
Get that moving again.
Yep. Anything else? Okay. We can move on. We have 10 minutes. Committee reports. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee met last week. Dan Cludier was elected chairman. And he solicited input from the members as to who wanted to serve as a liaison to various departments. And he did, I believe he sent that out to everyone. I don't have that list with me, but.
Website's updated.
Yeah, it is on the website. And he also offered if anyone, you know, the members can list their phone numbers, email addresses, et cetera. So we may need extra space, you know, to put that. And other than that, it was just really a discussion about how they're going to proceed. And it was more of an organizational meeting.
Do you want to mention about my comment here?
Oh, yeah. Selectman Devanza attended the meeting. He offered to the Budget Committee members the opportunity for those who have responsibilities as the liaison for the three major departments, the ability to do ride-alongs, whether it be police cruiser or, you know, fire department or DPW, that sort of thing. Also offered to hold, I would say more like a workshop for some of the new members. We have five new members. And it might be beneficial for them to collectively meet with department heads rather than doing it one at a time if they need any assistance. I also offered to meet with them to review the town budget, to give them an overview, et cetera. So that offer has been extended. And I think some of them have already, I know, taken that offer up with me. And I'm sure others, they just got their assignments this week. So it's a little early at this point.
Great.
Could I interject? I believe also there was a change in the meeting date from this time forward.
Yep. It's going to be on the second Wednesday of every month.
Calendar's been updated.
Right.
Okay, great. Any questions? Okay. The next one we have would be the Library Trustees.
Yep. Library Trustees also met. They elected Lisa Idice as their chair. And there really wasn't anything, I think, notable, you know, to report per se. The one, there was some discussion about the Friends of the Library. The membership has been declining over the years. And there's only a handful of people that are really, I wouldn't even call them very active. They do the book sale. They organize the Once Upon a Pie event. But they're, I guess, in desperate need for new people to join and to take on a leadership responsibility. So there will be either a press release or an article in the Gophstown News to ask people to join that group to keep those things going. And if not, if there isn't more of, I guess, an infusion of some people who want to see it continue, then the Friends of the Library will probably cease to exist. So that was about it for the library.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec didn't meet. Rick wasn't able to attend that night. So the committee kind of looked a little bit about what transpired last year and what we're doing this year. And some of the things that came up, obviously, we're getting preparation for the opening of the parks. They're starting to look forward as far as the preparation of the pools or the work that's going to be done in the pools. And they're trying to get some dates to that. The second piece that came up a lot was the field at Parsons Drive. And some of the questions, you know, and I was looking for some clarification not because there was that question of, do they just want to use the field the way it is? Or are they looking for a situation where they would take some of the slope out where we are with the Library Trustees? I mean, everyone seems to be going forward. But I mean, I think at this point, we're getting, we need to be much closer to that, hey, what exactly we're going to do with the field? Where's the entrance and where parking is going to be? So they're working forward with that piece there. Some of the thoughts that were coming up is that it seems that they do want to take the, you know, if everything comes to fruition and we're going to utilize it and we can figure out where we're going to put parking and access, they would like to take some of the, there's a large role in it, and they would like to take that out. Which means that if they were to go down that road, they would not be utilizing that field this year for the most part. You know, in other words, it'd be a preparation year. They don't want to go do a lot of work to it, but they'd like to make it a little flatter there. So some of the, so once again, as far as with the cemetery trustees, they want to make sure that we're good, but we've had every inclination that that is a go, correct?
Right. I mean, I was under the impression that we would have met with the trustees or setting up a meeting with them, you know.
I talked to Rick last week, and he was, should I meet one-on-one or should I meet with them as a group? And I said, I think you should schedule an appointment, meet with them as a group.
Right. But we also chatted about the trustees coming here because it's not just that parcel. It's also the expansion.
And general conversation.
Correct. And, you know, whether that, hopefully Rick can get ahold of them, you know, before. But I think it's important for us within, you know, I know we talked about it three weeks ago. And I was under the impression that we would meet with them in the short run because we do have the expansion of West Lawn Cemetery is front and center. And I know it's on Carl's to-do list this year. And then the issue with the fields.
Yeah, because like I said, that needs to be verified. And then the other piece is that, you know, I'm sure the homeowners who are adjacent to that property, you know, we should reach out and touch them. But they're not looking to make anything of structures or anything there. They're just trying to look what they had at the old field, but take out the null and if everything can go in, you know, smoothly and what the entrance would be and where the parking would be.
Okay.
Those are the questions there. A few questions came up regarding the revolving account. I'm sure Rick's going to get, or either he has got ahold of you or has he got ahold of you yet?
We talked about it before the meeting.
Okay.
But you said he wasn't at the meeting.
He wasn't at the meeting, so, but, you know, they're just, as these fees are starting to come into place this year, they just want to make sure they get all the proper processes in place. So I'm sure they'll be touching place regarding, I mean, when they receive checks, you know, how long do they hold it to the process and before they bring it here? So they'll be checking out some of those pieces there. And last but not least, there will be two openings, excuse me. There are two terms that came to end this year. And so we'll be looking once again at appointing two members to that board. And the two members who are up are actually, do want to come back, obviously.
Oh, okay.
So.
So they've been looking for reappointments.
They've sent in their volunteer forms to reup.
Yeah. And so, and they took their recommendation on that. And I think there might be two others that, or maybe there's two on file. We're not sure if they're still actively, you know, interested or not. But they were interested the last time around.
Okay.
To other candidates.
That it?
That's it.
Any questions? Okay. I attended a MAC meeting on Friday. And there was an update on some of the legislation that we had. And basically, the legislation is very fluid at this point. One of the Senate bill from Senator Bradley has gone through with some amendments and a few things.
That's the retirement bill.
Right. The retirement bill. And basically, it has the repeal of the evergreen. It's now law. Also, that's separate, but the repeal of the evergreen is now law. The earnable compensation definition has been extended to, for special detail, is a seven-year average. Gone out to a seven-year average.
As opposed to three.
Right. Which was before. The Board of Trustee membership has gone from 14 to 13 members. And they're still including four members for municipalities that are on there. And again, that's one that we've never had.
Management. Four for management.
Right. Management representing towns. So actually, the taxpayer actually has never had a seat at that.
This is, these are, this is Senator Bradley's bill that you're talking about.
Right. SB 3.
Yep.
Right. I have this here, and if you want, people can make copies.
Yeah, that'd be good.
On it. I have my notes on here. There's also been some benefits to the spiking penalty. And also, some of the return to work issues. There have been some changes. There have been some, a few changes to that. So it's made, it's made some changes. And basically, they wanted to make sure the, that we let our state reps know that basically, the bills that are coming out of the House that are individual bills for certain things, that this one is the one that they have is more comprehensive on it. So that we're looking to try to get this one supported rather than the individual other ones that are coming out of the House. Okay? So we can have copies for everybody on that one. Also, did you have questions?
I just had a request. We were tracking, I think, five or six bills.
I have some information on that.
All right. I would like to get how our state reps voted on each of those bills. I had a conversation with one of our state reps over the weekend regarding the interest on late tax payments. And one of the reps, and it was not one of the reps that was here.
Right.
Did not know how much revenue the town would lose. And really didn't, I didn't get a strong sense that the discussions that were had in terms of the fact that these interest penalties would be lower than most credit card interest rates. That was new.
Here's the interesting thing. That's gone through. That's Valen Courts Bill. And that one's passed. And it has a 6% pre-lean interest rate. So if you don't pay your taxes and you don't have a lien on your property, you're only going to pay 6%. And the average credit card is 14.8%. And I didn't catch what the after lien was. It might have been.
They were both halved, so that would be 9% after lien.
I would like to, I want to know how our reps voted. I mean, I think we were pretty clear with them as to the reasons. I also believe that we were pretty clear, I, my impression was we were clear with regard to if there was a need to compromise, then maybe to compromise. But to simply vote on that, I don't think that serves our town well. And I think it, I think most, although the majority of our citizenry pays their taxes on time, there is almost an incentive not to, based upon this legislative report.
Well, I think it comes down, if you get your bills and you have a tax bill, hey, you're only going to pay 6%. But the average credit card is 14.8. Which one are you going to pay? You're going to pay the credit card and leave the taxes, and everybody else is covering the taxes. So. That's.
And the other factor is, is that when you cut your interest rate in half, you know, that means that we get half of the interest that we were getting, which is about $60,000 to $75,000 of lost revenue to the town. Which means everybody else now is paying more because of, you know, folks that are delinquent on their taxes. I just don't think it's a good way of putting it.
And one of the other things, unintended consequences of this is if it's supposed to be helping people, it puts people in a position where, well, which do you pay? Do you pay the credit card or do you pay your taxes? And if you're looking at the tax rate, because it's, some people are paying 18% or 23% or 29% on their credit cards. So if they're going to pay their credit cards off and not their taxes, and that's going to continue, you're going to very likely wind up with more people that are being pushed into.
Tax deeding.
Tax deeding. As a consequence of what you're trying to help people, you're actually creating the problem. And unfortunately, then we have to go into borrowing money in anticipation of taxes. We pay interest on that. And everybody else that pays their taxes is going to be supplementing people who don't pay.
Well, I think we may be in a position.
Well, I, I think we may be in a position where we need to relobby our state reps, because, and I don't know what will happen in the Senate with this, because it has to cross over into the Senate, I don't know what the Senate will do.
Well.
And then I don't know what the governor will do, if the governor vetoes it, then, then the governor would, you would have to override the veto, which means there's another vote in, in the Senate and the House. Um, and then they need, you know, I think it's sixty-six percent, uh, vote to override the veto, and maybe there's a possibility there, but I don't think we should be giving up the fight on this one.
No, what it was brought up was that, uh, it was, it had a better chance to, um, to get changed or corrected.
In conference committee?
In the, in the Senate.
In the Senate.
In the Senate, so.
And I don't know if there was a roll call vote on that one. On?
I don't know, it didn't say, we didn't.
I know SB three there wasn't, right?
I don't believe so.
That was just a voice vote.
I don't believe so. I don't have a note that it was a voice vote, so. With that, but that's, that's what I have on the MAC. We're a little bit past, I think, are we all set with committee reports? Any other questions? Okay, uh, six-thirty we have. I assume we're not going to have the police chief here today.
No, his mother passed.
No, I, I.
Carl is substituting.
Right, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Carl.
Carl, do you have an agenda with the order, please?
I do. Sue was nice enough to sort these kind of like topic or subject matter, so. Please move through them rather quickly. Request A is for a blind driveway sign, this request came, uh, from a resident at Norman Road, one-seventy Norman Road. After the committee reviewed the request and discussed it with the resident, and reviewed the inspection or the officer's report from the field, it was determined that, um, there were a lot of blind driveways on Norman Road and that this one probably didn't elevate to the point of requiring a sign, so it was voted five-zero by the committee not to recommend the placement of the blind driveway sign.
Any discussion, questions, Carl?
Is it public comment time, too?
Well, I was going to ask the board first. Anybody have any questions, Carl? Any members of the public here who would like to speak on this? Seeing none?
Let's make a motion to accept the Highway Safety Committee's report to not recommend the, this blind driveway sign.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Uh, the next request was a blind driveway sign, uh, and/or a traffic mirror on Gostown Back Road coming out of, um, the Village of Glen Falls, I believe that's at Donald Street. Again, the committee reviewed the testimony, we had several residents from Medville Farms, uh, that were present at the committee's, uh, hearing on this. The determinations were made that the entrance does meet within sight-distance requirements. Uh, there was some discussion of making some minor improvements to the slopes, looking uphill from Donald. The maintenance staff at Medville has a machine that they could do a lot of that work, and the DPW would work with them, you know, in the town right away, just to make sure the drainage all works afterwards, so we thought that would be helpful. Uh, we discussed the mirror at pretty good length, um, and our, our feeling was that the mirror would hinder rather than help, and would create a liability, probably not only for the town, but for the association at Medville as well, because of the fact that vehicles or objects in the mirror are, are really closer than they look. So that was basically our discussion, uh, we also did talk about the fact that if, if somebody felt uncomfortable coming out of Donald, they could drive around and use the other exit from the, from the neighborhood. So based on that, the, uh, committee voted five-zero not to recommend. This, this also was before us a few years ago. The board is interested in that.
Any questions from the board? Anybody here who would like to speak on this? Seeing not, back to the board, questions for the motion?
Motion to accept the committee's recommendation not to install, uh, the signage or mirror.
There a second?
No second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Uh, the next request is for a speed limit sign, it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign, uh, on Bog Road. This is on the first section of Bog Road from, um, New Boston Road into, basically into Bell Road. We met, we looked at, at this request. The resident was very concerned about a, a development that's been approved by the planning board, which will be going in opposite Bell Road. The committee's vote was, or basically the committee, what the committee looked at, there is already a thirty mile per hour sign in that area. So I think our general consensus was that thirty miles an hour, based on the radar speed trailer and, uh, just police observations in the area, that thirty miles an hour was probably, uh, adequate. However, we felt that a, a second sign needed to be placed at the other end, so basically our recommendation is, uh, not reducing the speed limit any further than it already is, which is thirty miles an hour, but more clearly delineating the thirty miles an hour that exists there by adding another sign at the other end.
Any questions from the board?
And then you're also moving
Yeah, yeah.
From where it is, further closer to Pleasant Street?
Yeah, yeah, it's in there, it, it's not near the end.
The present, uh, thirty mile an hour sign is, uh, near where the transmission line goes across in the, in the low portion of the road, and the
And that's the one that'll move.
That will move closer to Pleasant Street, New Boston Road.
Anybody from the public here who would like to speak on this? Back to the board, any questions or motion?
Motion to, uh, accept the committee's report that, uh, on Bog Road, uh, the thirty mile, the present thirty mile an hour sign would be moved closer to Pleasant Street. Can a new thirty mile an hour sign be placed on Bog Road just north of its intersection with Lesnick?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? I have a question, Carl.
Yes.
Do you have a cost for this sign?
Yeah, basically those signs. Oops. Speed limit sign is, is approximately fifty dollars. Plus the sign post, which is another twelve fifty.
So we're looking at sixty-two fifty plus?
In materials, yeah.
And you have, uh, some money in the budget for signage?
Yes.
How much is in that line?
Uh, a little over thirteen thousand dollars, I think the board at the eleventh hour put the money back in to start our upgrade of signs that didn't comply with federal regulation. So we, we actually have a pretty good budget, but we have a lot of signs to replace as well.
Question, I realize, I realize the chief's not here, but hopefully you can answer. Was there any concerns from the, from the chief of the Police Department regarding that, that, that speed wasn't being, uh, that the speed limit wasn't being obeyed, or was there, were there any difficulties, or is it just, uh, a sign?
I can tell you that the conclusion of the radar trailer study, uh, found that there were very few speeding vehicles. The thirty mile an hour speed, you know, the average speed through there was just shy of twenty-nine miles an hour. The eighty-fifth percentile speed was thirty-four miles an hour, which is just slightly over the thirty.
So just bringing, Captain, what was the concern and, I mean, usually there's a concern for, for an addition of a sign or, or a removal of a sign, being that the reports aren't showing that, would, did anyone that came forward speak to that?
No, they, they were asking for twenty-five, and our review of the data suggested that the thirty was more appropriate.
So the, so the third, so people, the, 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 the committee said thirty is, is a, is a, is a proper speed, and they're saying that no one was actually violating that speed, I mean, for the most part.
Statistically speaking, yeah.
Current conditions, but I think he, I think the resident was trying to address future
Future damage.
Growth because of a new development going in.
Right, that concern.
And I'd like to add, uh, there is no speed limit sign as you enter Gostown on Bog Road, so, um, having the new sign is beneficial, um, as you're entering the town, that there is a speed limit posted.
Any further discussion?
A follow-up on Chairman DeVanz's question, how much of the thirteen thousand is committed at this time?
Well, so far, uh, with signs that we've ordered, well, invoices we've paid to date and signs we've ordered, we've spent about forty-two hundred dollars. About forty-five hundred dollars, I'm sorry. And, uh, if everything went according with the committee recommendations, that's an additional eight hundred dollars in your packet tonight.
So that's the impact of these recommendations is about approximately eight hundred dollars, okay. And forty-five has been committed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It's three-two.
Who were the two? You and Steve, okay.
Okay, um, the next one is for a dead-end, uh, or a no-throughway sign, this is for Acorn Drive. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it, but Acorn Drive is a dead-end, uh, street off of Tibbetts Hill Road, just above the, uh, the middle school. The residents were requesting that a sign be placed, um, probably particularly during construction last year, a lot of people trying to find their way around went up the street, but, uh, the testimony that we got when we heard this was a lot of people think it's another way into the school or go up there, uh, in error. So after discussing it, um, the committee voted four to one to recommend a dead-end sign be placed down at Tibbetts Hill Road at the end of Acorn.
Any questions, Carl? Anybody here from the public would like to speak on this? Back to the board, questions?
I'm going to make a motion to accept the Highway Safety Committee's recommendation to place a dead-end or a no-throughway sign at the corner of Acorn and Tibbetts.
Seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in.
One, one point, Carl, which style of that sign does your department prefer?
We have both in the system, so.
Is both in use
Yeah.
On our roads?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's four-one.
Uh, the next request is also for a dead-end sign, this is for Flanders Court, which is right out here off of Main Street. The complainant is complaining that, um, patrons of the village trestle are using Flanders Court to cut across private property to get into that parking lot out back. There is no public way out of Flanders Court. So again, after hearing the testimony that, that day and reading the police report, the committee voted four to one to recommend a placement of a dead-end sign at the end of Flanders Court.
Questions, Carl, from the board?
So the point of the sign is because they don't want people parking in the back, is that what I was?
They, they don't want people cutting through, cutting across the private parking lot to get into the parking lot.
There is signage for no parking
Okay.
on the public road, it's the, it's the apparent ease of exiting the road on private land.
So, but those who cut through it, I mean, how would a dead-end sign change that?
Since they're patrons of
I mean, I'm just trying to.
An establishment that already knows the cut-through is there.
And I'm not trying to drive a, you know, I understand, I understand those people's concerns, and I can understand it, but I don't know how that sign will change it, and I'm going to be the first, you know, I mean, I'm, well, I said it last year, we went through this process. The amount of signs is mind-boggling as we come through town or through intersection, and it gets to the point that I think it defeats the purpose sometimes, and sometimes I think it's a greater distraction than, than adds it to the town, I think this is one of those cases.
Part of the testimony we heard at that committee, uh, with this signage is that persons driving down the road and finding, uh, a car on the private land, and then the driver of the car on the road asking for that car to be moved, not realizing that he's asking a, a private citizen to move the car on the private land, the driver is, thinks it's a public way. Well, the sign would reinforce the fact that it's not a through road.
I, I don't agree, um, I, I did some reading about just that one, I wanted to see if, is it legal to go down a road through a parking lot and to another one, and it's not legal if you're trying to avoid a traffic signal. But other than that, it is, and, and most of what I read said that the, the owner of that lot should make it difficult to cut through, whether posting a sign that's saying it's a private parking lot, or putting an island in or something so that it's not easy to cut through, but I don't think putting a a dead-end sign is going to alleviate the problem with people who already know it exists and use it as a, as a way through.
Any, any questions for anybody from the public? Yes, sir. We need your name, yeah, we need your name for the record.
My name's Ken Richard, I live at, uh, six Flanders Court, and, uh, part of the reason for asking for that, uh, sign was to alleviate, uh, discussions like, uh, Mr. Pierce said, uh, with people that have come down the road and, uh, almost hit members of my family that are playing in the yard, uh, because they believe that that road is a cut-through through a parking lot, however, it's my front yard, it's not a parking lot, and, uh, my wife was almost hit out there by a car, 'cause, I don't know if you're familiar with the property, but the house sits on one side, on the other side of the drive, there's a garage, so it creates a blind spot, so when people come down the road, if they think they can cut through, and they come around the corner, anybody coming from the front yard, uh, can't be seen. So, um, I've tried to eliminate some of the people cutting down the road, but like, uh, Mr. Pierce said, I've gotten in arguments with people saying that it's a right-of-way, and they have the right to cut through. So I'm trying to get some backup behind what I'm saying, and as to it's not a right-of-way, and, uh, it's private property, and it's not a parking lot that the town owns, it's private property.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You're saying that this is private property?
Yes.
Is it a driveway?
It's a driveway, the, the front lot was turned into a parking lot back when there was a church in, in the house.
Well, what is it, who, what is it now?
It's, it's, uh, two family residents.
And is this a driveway?
The driveway starts at the, uh, the corner of the property, uh, I don't have a map of the property.
No, I guess the, the question is, the area that you're talking about that people drive, is that a driveway or is that your front yard?
Uh, front yard, but it's, it's all nip pack, it's all like crushed stone in the front yard.
Okay.
So it looks like a parking lot, the town put a, there was never a curb cut-in when that, uh, property was, uh, used as an impound lot for the Police Department, but they put a curb cut-in, uh, when they did the, the walkways, I don't know, four, five, six years ago, uh, which made it very easy for people to cut through there at that point.
Are you the property owner?
No, my sister is.
Yes, there's the, uh, there's the curb cut. Flanders Court, house, garage, and this is a gravel area. And there's no right-aways, is, is, it's your sister that owns it?
My sister owns the property, correct.
Okay, so that's all private property? It's all private property, this is a playing area for, for kids. Well, I guess the question I have, if it's private property, why are we putting a sign that says dead-end, you should, property owners should put a sign up that says private property.
I have a sign that says private property at the end of the street right now. But again, there's a misconception with the people that live in the neighborhood and that have been using that in the past. Uh, and even up until, uh, two years ago, the town plowed snow down the road through the property to the other end. So, and then the town truck would drive through and on, onto Mill Street, so we, we had So we, we had to put a stop to that, too.
I'm gonna, this is getting a little more than I thought I was gonna go to, okay. So when I turn off, uh, when I turn down this road, that, that part in between the two buildings there, that is, that is, that road is owned by the town, correct? And it goes down to, and I'm familiar with it in the back, when I, when I go through to the end, as, as we come out and I look right, that's where the dirt is where people would switch through to, to cut across, correct?
Correct.
Now that's a parking lot that's not owned by the trestle, it's owned by the apartment building, the apartment building that you're living in that's attached to that. And going back to, I think, what Nick was saying, then, so if someone was to say, hey, we're gonna put a fence here so people can't go through, that would be the end of the situation, wouldn't it not?
Well, yeah, I could put a fence, uh, over on the Mill Street side. Or I could put a fence cutting across the driveway on, on the other side. Um, and that would eliminate the situation. But it, again, if people turn in, they're still gonna be, you know, if they're coming down the road, I would have to put a, a fence down on, uh, across my driveway, basically.
The, the address of the house in question is six Flanders Court and, uh, would be unusual to.
Not have access?
Not have access from the street where your house is located.
I'm just looking for a way to, to tell people, hey, there's a sign there. I mean, I, I still have people parking in the parking lot even though I have a, a no parking sign there. Uh, and I can show people, hey, there's a no parking sign here, you can't park here, you're gonna be towed. I'm looking for a sign to say, hey, the town's posted, it's not a through street. And they know, okay, it's not a through street. But I, I, I'm still getting in arguments with people saying, no, it's a right of way, I don't know what you're talking about. So I've had eighteen wheelers drive through there to, to make deliveries, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I had one for Carl. Carl, based upon this photograph, would that sign just simply go where the no parking sign is there, right below it or something? So you don't think, it's just a matter of the cost of the sign? There's already a.
That was discussed in the committee.
Yeah.
Uh, putting the sign on the same post.
Right, okay. What sign would be going up dead end or no through way?
E- either one. Either one is fine.
I would think, I think not a through way.
No, through way.
Would make more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Ready for a motion, or?
Whatever, if you still have more discussion, I don't know.
Good. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Highway Safety Committee's recommendation to place a, not a through way sign, uh, at Main and Flanders Court.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, one more, dead end or not a through way. This is, this is on Fairview Street, uh, which is down in Purnardville. It's one of the dead end streets off of Mast Road. Again, this, I think this, what we saw was this was exacerbated with the sewer job going in last summer, and a lot of people trying to find their way around construction were going up. Selectmen, Pierce did a great inventory of how many streets down there are actually marked, and for the most part, uh, most of them are, do have a dead end sign on the end of them. However, Fairview does not. So after kind of reviewing everything, the committee did recommend four to one to recommend a, uh, no through street sign at the end of Fairview.
Yeah, I'll just, uh, add that this, uh, all these streets in Purnardville have been an issue over the years. There's been quite a bit of, of this, and this probably exasperated a little bit from the construction. But all along, uh, in the past, boards of selectmen have looked at this and requests that came up overwhelmingly, they were approved because of the types of issues. There's only one or two, I think, like McGuigan might be one of them. But there's some that only have like, uh, issues, but then majority of them, um, because of this type of issue, so.
One of the issues that makes Fairview especially bad is it's probably one of the longest ones.
Yeah.
So the, I think people get to the end and realize it's not a through street, they're pretty cranked and they wanna get back down quick, so there's a.
And you're going downhill.
Yeah.
And I'd like to point out to the board that a substantial number of residents on that street are being petitioners for this sign.
Any, any questions, Carl? Anybody from the public here? Yes. Sure, we're gonna need your name for the record.
Originally brought around this petition, um, because we could, we were concerned for safety of issues. One of the things, though, and I know, and I'm a taxpayer, so I wanna be careful how you spend my money. We do not have a street sign on our side on the south side of Mast Road with a fire station as it does in Fairview, is on the other side. And I was thinking, in order to save money and be more cost effective, rather than have a sign right at the end of the street that's square or whatever, and having to put in a post, that we could have something like this, just underneath the street sign in yellow with an arrow, one side going, um, if this would be coming, if you're coming up Mast Road heading towards Gosstown, and this one would be if you were coming from Gosstown, heading towards Mast Road, it would just be a simply a, something that would be yell, a different color. I think that's something they can do.
Seen that before.
With a little arrow, so you know exactly what, what it means. And it wouldn't need another post, it wouldn't need another metal post, it wouldn't need a big sign, would just let us, let people know. Because part of the problem is, when you drive up Mast Road, I mean, when you drive up Fairview Street from Mast Road, you've got a curve. So you don't know till you pass that curve that you're screwed. And that's when people get ripped. And not only do they drive fast from the curve, they go up around the cul-de-sac and then fly down that street. And then, of course, again, coming down at, if you're even over, even if you're doing thirty, thirty's too fast coming down, 'cause you've got that blind spot. And so that's why we'd like to see if we could cut down the traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, question, Carl? The, uh, small yellows, uh, no through or dead end up by them, there are some of those that are, are in Purnardville.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain that complies with MUTCD.
Well, that's, that was my point, 'cause we had this discussion back a while ago, quite a while ago. And some of them are there, and I think where we were coming from, 'cause that exact thing came up, and if they disappeared, we replaced them, we had to put it something else.
The signs that I inventoried, they're not uniform.
Right.
In style.
Right.
I'm just wondering if it, if it allows for where this isn't a regulatory sign, it's more of an informational sign?
I, I would have to look. Not opposed to it if it's, if it's allowed, but I wouldn't wanna put a new one up that doesn't comply.
Was there anybody else in the public who wanted to make a speech on this? Any further discussion from the board?
Make a motion to accept the Highway Safety Committee's recommendation for placement of a dead end or not a through street sign, uh, at, uh, Fairview, on Fairview Street.
Can, can I add something to that, though?
Sure.
Uh, could we leave that up to Carl for Carl to research, to see what's the best and most cost effective?
I'll amend my motion to what you said.
Okay. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who made the second?
Any, anybody opposed? Unanimous.
All right. The, uh, the next request is for, uh, several stop signs. Basically, the requestor made a request, all of the roads that tie on to Tibbetts Hill Road, Range Road, Horizon Drive, Plinton, Raymond, and Ryan, none of them have stop signs, so the requestor wanted stop signs at the end of all of them. After reviewing it with the committee, the committee recommended, uh, basically at Range and Horizon, mainly based on traffic volume, the amount of traffic coming out of those, that, um, that we agreed there should be stop signs there. The other three, we didn't feel warranted it.
And I'm gonna ask you the same question, Carl, do you have a cost for these stop signs? Are these, these are the large ones or these are standard size?
Well, they're standard size, um, that was included in the eight hundred dollars, but the cost of a stop sign, just for the board's information, is, uh, about sixty-five dollars plus the twelve fifty for a post if a new post was needed.
Did you say that would be standard size?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's for a thirty inch stop sign.
Any questions, Carl? Anybody from the public here that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to, uh, place stop signs on the two roads, uh, leading into Tip, Tibbetts Hill, Range Road and Horizon.
So you're basically asking for, well.
I'm, yes.
To accept the recommendation, 'cause there's an ordinance that's required, you can't just place the.
I stand corrected, accept the recommendation of the, uh, Traffic, uh, Highways Committee. Highway Safety.
There a second? Nick?
No, just a question, I'll wait for the second, I have a question.
You have a second?
I'll second it, and for disclosure, I live on Range. But I'm not gonna abstain.
And you had a question, Nick?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, they're recommending stop signs on Range and Horizon, because basically to stop traffic going into Tibbetts Hill, 'cause it's a busy commuter road. But these other roads, Plinton, Raymond, Ryan, all come out onto Tibbetts Hill Road as well. It's not busy for them.
I think they were trying to say the other roads are busier, Range, but still.
Well, it's, I mean, I think it's the main artery, it's, it's Tibbetts Hill that is the.
They are, they are much closer to the town line, not on the slope of Tibbetts Hill, where, where Range and Horizon is, are.
Question. When, when developers do go in and they, and in this case, such as that area, and they build, why wasn't there a stop sign from originally, and, and, but also, but also I sit there sometimes and I say, well, if I'm coming to a perpendicular junction, as you're coming down Range, I mean, the obvious.
T-intersection, you have to.
You have to stop anyway, I mean, are we telling them anything that they don't know?
Rules of the road, yeah, those are the rules of the road.
I, I don't understand that part a little bit, but I mean, and I understand, you know, one can always say there's that sign for safety, but there are some situations where that's just an obvious stop, I guess, also. And which begs to differ, I mean begs to, not differ, but begs to bring up what, uh, Nick said, is that if that's the case, why, why only two of them and not the others?
Basically, you're saying all or none.
I'm not saying all or none, I'm just trying to find out why, why it's important, in other words, rules of the road would say, would dictate, I'm gonna stop with or without a stop sign, I would hope. Okay. Second piece would be, if, if people are concerned that someone's not going to obey the rule, roll just automatically go through into a, into an, go through, go through that intersection. The question would be, why is it on two streets we're worried about and the other two we're not? I don't understand, I mean, was there something I, that they spoke about, or?
As I said, it was just the level of traffic, you know, Plinton has, whatever it is, three houses on it or something. Whereas the other are fairly substantial neighborhoods.
We're looking at two stop signs?
That was the motion seconded.
Okay, is there any further discussion? No, we went through. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
May.
May.
The next one is.
That failed, uh, that, asked for a follow up, sorry. Is it because the not all? I mean, we have to give direction to highway safety. The reason it was voted down is because it didn't include a recommendation for all of them?
So you want, you wanna know from each individual selection?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the reason why I voted on, there've been no stop sign there for that long.
Okay. So you feel the T-intersection is sufficient, the rules of the road? The rules of the road.
It's considered an uncontrolled intersection and, and those laws apply.
T-intersection.
T-intersection, okay.
T-intersection, but, uh, I'm leaning if the committee thought that Tibbetts Hill is busy enough to control the intersections, that, then the other ones in that area should be controlled as well.
Next one, Carl?
Uh, let's see, the next one is up at the end of, not the end, up on the old cul-de-sac of Winter Hill Road. If the board is not familiar with it, Winter Hill Road used to be a cul-de-sac with a, still is, cul-de-sac with an island in the middle of it. Uh, Winter Hill was subsequently extended with an additional subdivision. So the request that came in was for a one wa, a one-way sign to designate the direction of travel. After discussing it, the pavement is wide enough, what we concluded was pavement was sufficient for two lanes of travel. This wasn't a, a one-way width kind of situation. There's not much traffic in the area. The vegetation in the center island could be thinned if visibility was an issue, and, you know, one of our concerns we discussed was we didn't wanna create, and sometimes when we're plowing, we have to go around the opposite direction to get it plowed. So we, we didn't wanna create a situation that would limit how we could maintain the road. So the committee voted four to one not to recommend the placement of a one-way sign.
Questions from the board?
Carl, in the wintertime, when the snowbanks have built up and the roadway has narrowed, how is that for most of this past winter?
Again, we've never, we've never really had a complaint about the width, um, or the, or the travel.
And I say that only because I was there once, about two years ago, and almost hit somebody. And I was heading, you know, in the direction that you would normally head if it was a, a one-way and. Who owns that island?
Um, I believe it's all town right of way. I, I, I'm pretty sure, I don't think there's a separate lot in the middle there, I think it's all part of the cul-de-sac.
Any further questions? Is there anybody from the public here who wants to speak on this? Back to the board. Nick?
I'd be inclined to, um, accept the recommendation on the condition that the vegetation be, um, thin. But the, the way it is now, I think it's, it is just an accident waiting to happen.
Is there a second to that? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would. I've driven by there a few times, and I don't know how thin it can get. And.
Wooded.
It's wooded. And, uh, unless you take everything, I don't know, I, I, I got the impression, and we don't have a photo of this, unfortunately, I don't think we did. Yeah, no, it's a schematic, but if you saw, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
All the brush would have to be cleared.
The brush, I'll put it this way, that circle is larger than the grassmere circle, just so you know. And there, and it's much larger, and there's a lot of trees and.
Heavy trees.
Heavy trees in there. This is not, you know, you'd have to clear cut that thing pretty mu, for the most part, if you want visibility. And unfortunately, it is, it is, it's pretty wide, in, in my opinion, and, um, I don't know. This is one where, quite honestly, I, I just didn't see any problem putting up, you know, a nice looking arrow on both sides, and maybe not, you know, I, I didn't see any harm or foul on that one, but I.
Can I pour that as well?
I'm gonna.
I'm gonna. I'm, is there any motions on the table? Or no?
Yeah, there is.
Oh, is yours?
Well, I didn't actually make a motion, I said I would be in favor of this if it was under the condition that it was thinned out.
I, I, I.
I know you seconded that.
I support, I support the idea that you, it's so heavily wooded that the concept of thinning it out to help see around the, the bend is not feasible.
And I, and I, I know for, I was, I was, it was about a year or two ago, and I know, I was there when somebody went the wrong way. So, um, luckily, there are not that many homes on the other side of that mall, depends which side of the circle you're on, but, um, this one, to me, kinda makes sense where we have these. But this one, to me, kind of makes sense where we have these, it's, it's a large circle. We have, we have these arrows on our trap, obviously, it's a lot different where we, you know, in, in the two circles that we have. But this one, there's, there's quite a few homes on Winter Hill. And people go, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm in favor, I'm going to make a motion to, to recommend that one-way signs be placed on the cul-de-sac.
Okay, well, back, so then there was no motion seconded, and I thought you...
Yeah, there was. Nick made the motion and you seconded it.
Oh, I apologize, I...
True.
Except our recommendation with thinning of vegetation.
It mustn't really freeze his motion.
I would be in favor of this.
Oh, okay.
With the condition that it was thin.
So, Scott would like to continue with motion?
I guess I didn't second a motion, then.
I guess not.
Okay.
So, if, then if mine, you know, still stands, then it would just to...
Recommend?
Recommend that one-way signs be placed on both sides of the cul-de-sac.
So, that is their recommendation, right?
No, it's not.
Oh, not recommended, okay.
Recommendation was to not recommend it, and I'm, just based upon what I've seen, I...
I, I have a question for you. So, if you put these signs up, from reading through here, the people that are going down the wrong way, and the people who live close to the other side, and it appears, although it wasn't stated, because nobody stated it, but it appears that they go that way so they don't have to drive around. To the right way, they take the other way for short, to shorten it up, their time. Do you think that those, that signage is going to stop those people from doing it?
I think it's going to prevent people who don't know what they're doing, to know that they have to go bare right as opposed to, they don't know, a lot of people, if you go there, you don't know if it's just a, okay, if it's just like a, a circle and there's a cul-de-sac. But it's, since it's extended, that's what I think the problem is. I don't think it would be half bad if it was just a cul-de-sac at the end. But because it extends, that's where my, you know, my concerns lie.
You, you do not get the impression that it, that it continues as a cul-de-sac. You, you see a road turn off to the left, and you see a road turn off to the right, and the center island is so heavily wooded and large that it, it looks maybe like a T-intersection initially, until you start going around. And quite honestly, there is one residence, I believe it's one, on the nine o'clock, if you were to turn left as you approach the circle, there's one resident there. So, if, yes, it's an inconvenience for that one resident to go counterclockwise.
Steve?
You spoke about plowing, Carl. How, this, this would become, how much more work does this mean?
Well, it, it... Normal winters is probably not that big of a deal, but I'm sure there are occasions where to widen the inside of the circle, we go around it the wrong way. Push the snow in.
And the second question, I'm, I'm looking at a picture that Sue brought up, and I appreciate it, Sue. How many houses are on the street, roughly?
I think there's four, four on the circle itself, I think, four driveways.
Probably another dozen beyond it.
I'll be on there, there's probably eight or ten or twelve of them.
And how...
The problem, my concern with this particular one is that it doesn't, it just doesn't, when you, when you drive up Winter Hill, it doesn't give you the impression that it, it's a through, you know, that it's a cul-de-sac with a street beyond it. It almost gives you the impression that it is kind of like, that's it. And if that was the case, I'd be, say, forget about it. But because it, it does extend beyond with another ten to twelve homes, that's what, and I've seen somebody go the wrong way, you know.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I did. I had to put a motion on the table. I don't, I don't think I got seconded, though, so...
Right. Second by Nick.
Is there any further discussion? One thing I will say is, I've had some discussion at the planning board. It was talked about plowing the circles the other way, as Carl mentioned, because by the, doing that, you won't get the, the snow into the people's driveways that live on the outside of the cul-de-sac. You'll be pushing the slope, the snow towards the middle, and that was a recommendation. That some members of the planning board did, did bring up as to the way they are plowed, and that's what Carl said, and by doing that, we wouldn't be able to plow it that way.
But we should not be plowing it that way technically, because you're going against, you know...
You can't plow, you can't, can't adjust the plow to go one way or the other way?
No, because your wing is on the other side.
Yeah. You can angle them a little bit, but the wing, all that, that truck is a wing plow, so you'd have to lift up the wing.
Right.
I suppose, you could.
What are you seeing that we don't see?
Those plows, well, if you didn't...
Sue had a, no, Sue and I were looking at it, why don't we go straight through?
Take the island out.
Go straight through the center.
Add that to the road plan, Carl.
Less, less air eater, plow, less turns.
We're not quite sure why the circle's there.
What you don't see in those trees is the big giant noble ledge.
Very evident when you first come in.
So, we weren't laughing, we were just chuckling it, you know, we were just chuckling it.
Didn't just happen by accident.
Yeah.
Is that where the develop, the first development ended? Is that circle? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And rather than blast out the ledge, they just put the road around.
Once again, a, a planning board years ago perhaps should have requested the development with a one-way sign there. Just like other developments that we talked about earlier, should have had stop signs.
That's done now, but these pre-existed that.
Any further discussion?
Just, just a, just a quick question. Has it, did, were there any accidents or any concerns for, that's going on? I mean, I, I take it that the concern for this, that they're, they're, they don't want someone coming one way while a vehicle's going the other? Is that my understanding here?
Yeah.
Has there been accidents? Have there been any issues?
Quickly looking, I don't see any evidence of accidents.
No. If there were, there would have been, it would have been...
But the concern is voiced for that.
Right.
Like I said, I, you know, they got in there, and it's, it's kind of, for your kid, I guess it was a mess.
No, because even with the signs, in fact, I know someone who was actually in our new circle and someone was turning the wrong way, even with the twenty million signs we put out there. So, I don't think it takes away from all of it, you know, that's, you know...
Not I think any of the signs we put up anywhere, like you've said, on any of these or anything in the speed limit. You're always going to have someone who disregards the signs, and you can't control that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Three, two.
Okay.
Phil and Steve were next.
The next request is for no parking signs on Prospect Street. Right now, Prospect Street is no parking along one side. There's one resident that has problems because his driveway to the house is, when cars do park, mainly to attend funerals at the funeral home, but for any reason, when cars park on that section of street, the street is just not wide enough to support exiting or turning out of the driveway. So, we looked at a lot of different options here. One of the suggestions was portable no parking signs that could just be put out during funeral events. However, those are not enforceable. We felt that limiting no parking just in this one area would just push the problem down onto somebody else. It's basically the committee voted to recommend no parking along the entire street.
You must have the same email?
Well, I, I didn't even need the email. I, I'm trying to get the, the thinking of the committee on this. We have no parking on one side. And that works unless there's a service going on, and people ignore that and illegally park. So, to solve this problem, we're going to put no parking signs on both sides. So that normally, when there isn't a service going on, no one can park on the street. But probably when there's a service, people are going to ignore the signs and park anyway.
So, I'm trying to think of the law, what, what's the logic for that?
Just as a follow-up on that, the exact point is there was no parking out in front of the wall down on Mash Road, but during a service, cars do park down there also.
Just, one other thing, just to make the committee aware of, it was, it was brought to our, back when this request was made, the no parking on one side was not evident. There were no signs at all. Later, we found the ordinance where the prior board had approved no parking on one side. So, we went out and put the signs up. When the signs got removed, I don't know. Like, I don't know if it was...
I think it was years ago.
Years ago it happened, but there was a prior action by the board to limit parking on one side. So, back, you know, when those photographs were taken with the cars on both sides, you won't see no parking signs because it, the signs just weren't up there.
Steve?
It kind of speaks to what Nick was saying. I had received an email from, from a resident on that street. I imagine it comes down a little bit to that, if you put no parking on, on both sides of the street, that's every day, twenty, you know, twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, or every year. Now, if you have ample parking for people to come and visit you, and they use your parking space, one would say, jeez, I don't like these cars lined up on my street during, during funerals. But if you are one of the people who live there and don't have ample parking, and then someone comes to visit you, where are they going to park? And I think that's, you know, so I think that's the situation. And I, I, and I would, so I think you probably have two different groups of people there, you know, looking at this a little differently on that street. Myself personally looking at this, I'm saying to myself, if we don't have a no parking sign up for those days of the funerals, is there an inconvenience? Yes, but at least all the other balance of times, if someone wants to come and visit, there's a place to park.
Steve?
The original petitioner, his driveway, like Carl mentioned, it is a, it's only space for one car. It's relatively close to the street, so there's no turning possibilities to, to get out onto the street. So, I understand the petitioner's situation. He could be blocked in at times of funerals. Where I'm leaning with this, is it possible that the house opposite the petitioner, which is five Prospect Court, Prospect Street, is it possible that a sign could be there saying, no parking from, from here to the street corner? That would prevent two cars uphill from the entrance into the funeral home and two cars downhill from the entrance into the funeral home. So, it would be restricting four cars potentially parked in the, lots of cars parked there.
Nick?
I have a quick question, and...
So, I'm, I'm asking Carl, do we have, do we have any situations in town where we have no parking from here to corner?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Not, not to sound callous, but is there a reason why we can't just request, like, increased enforcement? Ticket cars that are parked illegally, and I think after a period of time, people get the message?
People are going in for a funeral service. And I'm just, I'm just laying it out. I, I think...
Okay, I understand that.
And I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but it, it's awkward. I think that's part of the problem, is that, do you want someone to come out from going to a, a funeral and then get a parking ticket? So, I, there's a couple of issues that I have with this. This, this road is very narrow. I just went, I just went to a service there last week. When both cars are on the side of the street, you can barely get one car by. There's snow, which we've had significant snow. Even when you have one side of the street parking, try to think about putting a fire truck up that street. Even if it's, you know, on one, with snowbanks and parking on one side, I'm telling you, it's going to be really difficult to get fire apparatus up that street. I think you have to respect the fact that people, like Steve said, they want to park in the summer months, et cetera. But I think Dave Pierce's suggestion may be have some validity. Just have no parking to the corner. It solves this problem of, of, of the...
Let me stop you there, though. It doesn't solve this problem, because the problem is during a service. And what you just said reinforces that, because obviously, we're not going to enforce anything during a service, so that parking is going to be there.
I think, I think the issue is, is that if you, no matter what ordinance you have, you're going to have to enforce it. I mean, there's no doubt about it. But there's a difference, I think, between having no parking on the entire street, and then just having only like two areas, you know, pretty much two car lengths where you can't park. And if you get a ticket, then you're going to get a ticket. I mean, I don't know what else to say.
One comment I have, question I have on here, looking at this, because I, I've been in, in the past, I've been involved when we had to do restrict parking. And what we used to do is I've gone along with the chief and knocked on the doors of all the neighbors and had a discussion with them about this, about no parking, how it affected them, what their opinion was. And this no parking on that street affects quite a few people, along with the funeral home, that were having part of this discussion here, too. So, I don't know if that discussion, there was nothing in here that other people had been asked that specific, this recommendation from, from the committee, the effect on them and what, what their, their feelings were on that. So, I mean, I just, I, I don't, I don't think that this is really... The concern I have is that, that's, this is the outcome of a request for a specific area across from the person who made the request's driveway. And as a result, the outcome is no parking on the entire street, which affects everybody that lives on that street, and affects everybody that, there are people that don't have much parking. And has always been the issue whenever we've had these, these discussions about restricting parking. We've had people that were affected by students around the high school. People ask for no parking, but they don't realize that there's no parking, it's twenty-four seven, and it's going to affect them when they have company also that they can't park out there. So, I just, I just have a concern that the outcome of this recommendation not being what the requester desired, I, I don't, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with it.
I, I, I'd like to add in there, then, Mr. Chairman, we, when the committee discussed all this, we got eventually around to discussing the width of the street for fire apparatus and also snow plowing, because the snow plowing restriction is nighttime. So, you're, as soon as we reached that point, we perhaps too hastily may have said no parking for the whole street. That's why I like to offer the compromise that it's on that, from the middle of, now, I'll make this a motion, and that...
Before you do, could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That we just send this back to them for, to look at this again and take that up?
Yeah, I'll accept that.
Question. If I could read. The Highway Safety Committee met on September eighth, two thousand and ten, to discuss the aforementioned request. I mean, are we going to wait six months to get an answer?
Well, that's, we can have that discussion after all of this, because I have the same concern.
I mean, you picked up, I, I didn't, you know, there was some that were different. But, and there's a couple of issues, and I'm not, I'm not adverse to having them take another look. I just like them to have a more expeditious, expedient answer, I should say. The other thing is that, again, I'm not going to throw, it begs the question, does, should this road even be two-way? It's so narrow. It's only eighteen feet from, what's, what's the, what's the twenty, how much is the typical?
Typical, we do twenty-four.
Twenty-four. I mean, you know, if you put two, two cars there, you barely can squeeze a, I mean, I don't think you can. You could barely squeeze another one. There's a picture of it here, barely.
There's only, I mean...
And that's no snow.
We have a lot of roads in town that are like that. So, we're going to, we're going to do one. I mean, what, what you're doing here is you're basically telling everybody, don't ever come for an application for something to highway, sign a highway, because what you, what comes out of it...
You never know, it's a surprise.
Right. You want, now you can't even sell your house, because it's a one-way street, nobody can get in there. So, I, I mean, that's, that's a concern. I mean, you, 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 you take, take Grady Hill Road, for example. There's another one. Members of the public want to speak? Yes, sir. We need your name for the record.
Sure. Mike Lawler, if I may. Mid-six Prospect. I was the original petitioner. And first of all, thank you for the opportunity. It has been a while. Scott, to speak to making Prospect one-way, there's a two-seventy blind corner at the other side of that. So, by making it one-way, you're going to make it real difficult for whichever direction is trying to navigate that two-seventy blind spot. And East Union Street, I think, is posted at thirty. I wouldn't say that's a comment there. I had originally asked for no parking here to corner, as, as Selectman Pierce had said. And I think, you know, what was lost with, or possibly lost with the Traffic Study Committee was that our situation is unique because of our proximity to the funeral home and because our driveway doesn't line up across from another... and because our driveway doesn't line up across from another driveway. Typically, in the twelve years we've been there, there have probably been a dozen, maybe fifteen times that someone is physically blocking our driveway. There have been hundreds, probably someone's been parked across from the driveway restricting access. The difficulty becomes the, um, it's only during the funeral proceedings. And we've tried a number of times with the funeral home. But because of our driveway not lining up across from another, our situation is unique. So I don't believe that it moves the, the problem up the street. You know, when you park at Hanaford, you pick a closer spot to Hanaford. So I think that by making it no parking here to corner, I think that takes that issue away. And to speak to Nick's concern about it becoming an, an enforcement issue, since the signs have been put up saying no parking on the east side of Prospect Street, the side without the sidewalk, the side my house happens to be on, there have not been, even, even during funerals, there have not been cars parked on that side of the street. So I don't think it's been an enforcement issue either during funerals or not during funerals. And we've been very careful in bringing this issue forward because frankly, we've never had an issue with the people that are at the funerals. We've all attended them. We know that your thoughts are elsewhere and, you know, but in the absence of a sign reminding you not to park across the driveway, there's no polite way for me to remind someone that they're blocking us in. And we're relegated to, you know, reading the paper to find out when there might be a, a funeral coming, putting trash cans out and doing whatever else we can so that, you know, we can simply get in and out of our driveway. But frankly, I would ask that you vote against any, uh, motion to make no parking at all on the street because you've got a bunch of hundred-plus-year-old houses that were built close to the street on narrow lots, which means there's no parking for visitors. And during the winter, that means no parking for visitors probably within a quarter mile. That's, that's it.
Nick, if you could, did I, did, maybe I misunderstood you. Did you say since those no parking signs have been put up, there has not been a problem with anyone parking on that side?
On the side that has the signs, that's, that's correct. I, I don't believe the PD has had to ticket anyone in that time. That's, that's-
So you haven't had anyone blocking your driveway since the signs have gone up?
Not blocking our driveway, physically parked, um, at the very end of our driveway. But the parking on the other side of the street is proximal enough as, as I think we've heard. The, the street is eighteen or eighteen feet in change. I had a Chevy pickup that was nineteen feet front to back on a, on a T driveway. There's no way if someone's parked across from there that it'll get either in or out of that driveway. And that's, that's been the issue. And that's, that's why I had asked for the no parking here to corner because I think it solves both problems. It doesn't unduly restrict the residents from having guests and it allows us reasonable access in and out of our house.
The restriction is on the same side of the house that they live.
Right.
There's still people parked across.
Right, right, I understand. During, during the service last week, which was, uh, well-attended, there were no cars on Mr. Lawler's side of the road.
Any other questions? Need someone else? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So shall we send this back to them?
Well, my, I don't know. My inclination was, um, the applicant, I know it was mentioned in, in your, um, discussion about a no parking to the corner. Your, your committee then went kind of more draconian, but it seems to me that-
Quite honestly, I, I don't recall the committee discussing no parking to the corner. It was like either parking opposite the house forbidding that or just ultimately we came down to no parking on the entire street. And that's why I, as a, as a compromise, uh, second guessing this, I believe it would be more prudent just to say no parking from the middle of Five Prospect Street, the middle of that house to the street corner.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Yes.
And the motion is?
The motion, uh, is, well, uh-
No parking from here to corner? Midway from Pros, Five Prospect Street to corner?
It's, it's technically not to accept the recommendation of the Highway Safety Committee, but rather, um, install no parking from the center of Five Prospect Street to a sign that would say no parking from here to the intersection. On the street.
Could we do this in two phases, then approve or not approve, which I think the recommendation would be disapproved and then go towards a approval, make it simpler?
Well, actually, you don't have to approve or not approve. You just don't act on it.
Just don't act on, okay.
Just don't act on it.
So the motion is no parking from center of Five Prospect, Pro, Five Prospect Street to the corner?
Can I just, uh, is there a second?
Yeah, exist.
Okay, a second. And I looked, I looked at the, uh, initial interview and the initial request, the form that was originally submitted. And I looked at the first interview where usually it's pulled out in that interview exactly what the applicant is requesting. And there is, um, there's, there's not a specific to that. The only thing that's in there is no parking between signs.
Which is essentially the same thing because it's, it's Five Prospect Street and then, um, the end, the corner of the rear entrance to French and Rising is pretty much the bottom of the hill.
Yes.
Right.
I, rather than two signs-
Right, just one.
Limiting, limiting a very short stretch, which is confusing. Put up one sign.
Could we bring in the specialist again and see, and just have him weigh in on it?
Who?
The gentleman that was here a second.
The applicant?
He's, I call him the specialist. He lives there. I mean, just to have his, if, if we, if the board would, I have to ask the board. I can't, I'm asking it here if we can-
No, that's, that's fine. Nick?
Just to, just to clarify a little, the, the request is on August eighteenth. The, um, the officer went down on August twenty-ninth. At a selectmen's meeting on August twenty-third, we inquired about the signs and they had just been ordered. So a lot of this predates when any of those signs went up.
What was the date that we put the action back in to put up the signs? You said, you mentioned the date of August twenty-ninth, the officer went down and then-
August twenty-third, I inquired, um, from Carl about the signs and he said that he had just ordered them. They had ordered them, but their fax never got the, the shop never got the fax and, so they were still on order.
Okay, you had a question?
Well, I don't know if we, I would like to hear gentlemen, gentlemen's thoughts on this process here.
Thoughts on the motion, that's, that's on-
It's on the table, correct.
Okay.
Talk about battlefield promotions.
Specialist.
Now to gentleman.
I wasn't trying to put you, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but living there, I didn't know how-
Wait a minute, just stick around. You'll be called all kinds of things.
I haven't called much of other things, so anyway, go ahead.
Frankly, I'm in favor of the no parking here to corner from the center of Five Prospect. I believe that's the best solution.
And Mr. Chairman, the reason I said that, it still allows two spaces of parking, uh, or, well, at least one in front of Five Prospect Street. If that person were to have guests and then further back along Prospect Street for any guests.
I'll second it.
No, it's seconded by next-
Already been seconded.
Then let's go.
Okay, let me ask you, let me ask a question. Are we done with Mr. Lawler?
Thank you.
I missed one.
I think it was very nice that he, I think it was very nice that he came down.
Okay, is any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
All right.
Almost there, Carl.
Yep, almost there. The next request, uh, comes from, well, basically Mary Lou Preschool, eighty-six Center Street. It's a request for a removable pedestrian crossing sign. Uh, there is a crosswalk connecting the parking lot to the, uh, the side where the building is. The committee discussed this. We kind of reviewed history. At one point in time, the town gave Mary Lou a portable pedestrian crossing sign, which apparently has been misplaced. They're fairly expensive units. So the basis of the recommendation, the, the recommendation of the committee was that they're, the town wouldn't pay for it, but they're welcome to purchase their own, um, suitable sign to replace the one the town provided and they could continue to use it.
Any questions, Carl? Anybody from the public that wants to speak? Back to the board.
I'll make a motion to accept the Highway Safety Committee's recommendation, um, regarding the Mary Lou Preschool request.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Unanimous.
Yeah, okay.
Five boho.
Uh, the next request comes from a resident on Daniel Plummer Road. The request was for a streetlight, uh, to be placed at the end of her driveway. Uh, the board discussed this. The area in question is not at an intersection, a public street intersection. Uh, there is a yard light at an intersection not too far from, uh, the residence. So the board, uh, the committee, based on both budgetary constraints and, um, concerns that the streetlight wouldn't do anything to help the traveling public, felt that this was not an issue for the town and voted five to nothing not to recommend.
Questions, Carl? Anybody from the public wanna speak on this? Seeing none, back to the board. Questions, comments? Your motion? I'll make a motion to accept the Highway Safety Committee's recommendation.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining, unanimous?
The last issue that I bring to you tonight, um, is a request for, this is another, uh, intersection sign and another mirror in the right-of-way. Basically, after looking at it, we, we kind of talked about, uh, moving, moving the speed limit signs to better locations. And basically, we have the same liability issue that we discussed earlier with the mirror in the town right-of-way. So the committee voted five to zero to not recommend, uh, the intersection sign or the convex mirror. Oh, by the way, this, I don't even know if I told you, this is at the end of Kaninger Road at Shirley Hill.
So that drivers exiting Tangier would have the mirror-
Right.
-in front of them, presumably looking to the right.
I believe so, yes.
Because it's a curve approaching on the right.
Questions, Carl?
And where would the intersection sign be?
Uh, on Shirley Hill leading up to-
Coming down or going up?
No, um-
There is a sign, kind of, if you're coming down Shirley Hill, there is a sign.
I believe there is. Yes, yes, there is. There's actually a photograph of it. Yeah.
Any, any other questions, Dan? Members of the public? We're gonna need your name for the record.
Morris, hey, Morris. I live on Tanageroe. I was the original petitioner. It's a longstanding problem. It is a blind intersection. Happened again just a couple of months ago. I look, I look, I pull out, car right on my tail. I have to gun it safely get into the line of traffic. There have been times when we've had, when I've had a car coming through the west, coming up Shirley Hill, and I'm trying to get out of the way of the guy who's right on my tail. I have neighbors who have taken a half a mile detour because they're so afraid of the intersection. At nighttime, we can see the headlights. All right, there's no problem. During the day, the, yes, there is an intersection sign, but I want you to look, the police came down and, and had a good look at it and I thank them for that. I want you to look at where that intersection sign is. It's practically on top of the intersection. People coming down the hill don't see it to the last minute if they pay attention to it at all. Speed limit signs. I mean, if we just move that sign, it might help. You know, that wouldn't cost anything except an hour's labor. And now the speed limit sign. God almighty. Well, is it gonna take something like at Wallace Road and Shirley Hill Road before we do something? You know, I beg the board to do something. I mean, it's five to nothing vote. The mirror is just one idea. I mean, there's a guy on Addison Road has it on his own house. It's one idea. We need something, please, before somebody gets killed. I have a neighbor here with me who lives right on the corner. He's gonna testify as in accidents that have happened right on the corner. But, God almighty, I can't tell you how many times we pull out and, and we look and we pray is there gonna be a car on my tail? Because it's, they're coming downhill, they pick up speed and, and the cops have, they've told me they've clocked them at over forty miles an hour. Well over forty miles an hour at times. Not all the time, but-
Nick has a question for you.
Is this for Carl?
Oh, Carl, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Carl, that intersection sign, that placement, can that be moved?
Yes.
Further uphill? Can you add, are you allowed to add anything like caution, uh, blind intersection or something to that intersection sign to just give a little bit more caution to people coming down the hill?
You gotta be careful, because if you do something like that, then it's a liability issue on behalf of the town.
Isn't there a liability with a blind intersection, though? Excuse me for interrupting.
Well, I'm saying using a sign that, that, within the, the code. Using traffic codes to alert, uh-
I, I don't believe, you know, other than, um, putting something like a flasher on it, like we tried to do, uh, up at Shirley, I have seen, and I'm not sure where it's applicable, but putting little like orange flags off the post or something like that. I mean, I have seen things, but again, I could, I could look and see what's allowable and-
Yeah, a lot of times, I know this might, um, one suggestion would be you typically have a sign and then you have a green, you know, it's a green, um, pole. But when you just change the color of that, it automatically, it looks so different than other ones. And all you've done is put a reflective strip on this, on the sign itself and that draws attention to the sign a lot better than just a typical green that kind of blends in. And that may also-
You're talking about the reflectorized thing on the post?
Yep, the reflectorized on the post. Um, I've seen that in other, in other towns and, um, it definitely draws your attention because it's not something that you usually see.
Well, I'm just thinking of something more than, because, I mean, how many times you go down the road and you see those intersection signs and you kind of see them, but you don't really think anything of it?
No, I recognize that, but I guess what, what I'm trying to say is that it's not just, you have the sign, but typically it's on a green post. But if you put something, if you, if you put the, a reflective thing below the post, and I've seen it red and yellow, all of a sudden, it's like, it's, it's different than any other sign that you see because it's, it's not a green post. It's, it's, there's a, there's a strip of reflection on it. It just draws your attention to it more.
Just, just a question. I mean, I understand, I know the intersection and you're coming down, that, that's a terrible intersection. I'll say that. A sign still doesn't, I mean, the people who travel that road are gonna see, are the people who routinely travel. I mean, I don't think, you know, the words, most people, you're, that's, that's typical traffic that's going back and forth. So the situation that you're speaking about is it's the speed of what they're coming down and coming around the corner. If someone's coming-
It's too late.
And, and if someone's coming at a, at, at the speed limit even then, is that a questionable?
I think so. Uh, that would be another suggestion. Could we have a reduced speed limit at that particular area? Like you see a different colored speed limit sign, you see a different colored post with different colors. Speed limit sign maybe five or ten miles lower than the rest of the road. We're just looking for answers.
I think one, I think one would, would argue that the condition of, of Addison Road right now is almost an automatic speed. You can't go more than twenty, twenty-five on that road right now. Although it's a little better, you know, with, with Tananger.
Did you wanna add, did you wanna say, add something else?
I just did. I just did.
Okay. Yeah, I know.
Thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Yeah, going down the hill.
We're gonna need your name for the record.
He gave his name, oh, his, oh, his name, yeah.
Yes, my name is Victor Cedric, I live at four Tanninger Road on the corner of Shirley Hill Road and Tanninger Road. I've lived there for thirty-four years. And I'd like to second everything that my neighbor, Mr. DeMores, said, and I again appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. I personally witnessed three severe accidents at this corner in thirty-four years. It's amazing, none of them were fatalities, somewhere near fatalities. The problem is twofold. It's not only limited line of sight, which is only about two hundred and two feet in the westerly direction. The problem is the speed, people gain speed, particularly in the winter time. It is a dangerous intersection. And it was so marked until about five or ten years ago, when evidently because of liability concerns, the sign was removed. I feel that the suggestions we've made back in September were reasonable. And nothing really has happened since then and I think it's, it's a severe accident waiting to happen. Not only from a collision point of view, but some of the accidents I observed were actually people losing control, coming down Shirley Hill Road, losing control in that turn. So if you can't put dangerous intersection sign up, I would suggest putting something like severe turn or, or as my neighbor recommended, reducing the speed going into the turn. Because people absolutely lose control in that turn sometimes, they gain speed coming down. There's no speed limit with any, within any distance of that intersection. So having a speed limit sign, a lower speed limit sign, and then also indicating that that is a sharp turn as well as a blind intersection. If you can't say the word blind, there must be another word, you know, limited...
Sight distance or something.
Yeah, limited sight distance intersection that would relieve the town of its liability. But also, even though the Chief Sullivan isn't here, I think one thing that would help would be having increased enforcement. Nobody speeds past St. Ansem College and gets away with it. And I think we're entitled to at least a similar level of protection before somebody gets killed and/or seriously injured. And as my neighbor said, you know, you've got Wallace Road and Shirley Hill is an example there. So I would, you know, beg the board's indulgence, indulgence to consider something that will be effective. And if it's a matter of cost, you know, for these signs, I will personally pay for the signs. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Question, question for Carl. Carl, can you, is it permissible, can we get something that says sharp curve or something to that effect?
Yeah, they have that standard MUTZD symbol that shows a sharp turn or even put up the chevrons, you know, leading into the turn, just to notify drivers that there's a sharp turn.
Could you post the speed limit on that sign or near that sign?
You're not supposed to put two signs on a single post. But, you know, the, the post isn't, it's only twelve bucks, so it's not like the post is the big cost item.
You're talking about the thirty-five miles, huh? Question I was gonna ask, can we put up a recommended speed limit sign, in other words, a yellow thirty?
A cautionary speed limit.
Yeah, because that's not a regulatory, that's not a statutory speed limit. I don't think we need an ordinance for that.
Like you have at the roundabout.
Right, so let's say that Shirley Hill is thirty-five, so that we don't have a section that we have to have an ordinance and special signage. If you did that with the yellow sign that said thirty miles an hour with the curve?
I think it's possible.
I mean, that might solve the problem just so that you know that there's a curve coming up and it's suggested, that's a suggested speed reduction.
That's, I like that.
It's a good idea.
You know?
It's a good idea, yep.
Is that a fifty-five dollar sign?
No, you're adding on, so that would probably knock it up to seventy bucks.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion, it's a good one.
Okay, is it the curve and the speed limit, recommended speed limit?
I believe, I believe the way that works is the diamond warning sign with the curve and then there's a square sign under it with the recommended speed limit.
Right, because you have that, right, for like Nick said, the roundabout, you have that, it says roundabout and then fifteen.
Yep.
The only other piece I'd like to add, the gentleman's so correct, you go down St. Ace, no one goes over the speed limit, I'll tell you that right now.
Or James Lane.
Or James, oh, yeah, or, I wanna hang out at James Lane and so, I think, you know, if we could follow up with the chief, I think that would, that would go along.
No, 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 they do, but they get pulled over.
But, but St. Ace, you, I mean, you can expect to see someone there in St. Ace Drive.
Okay, so who made the motion?
Uh, that is Nick, seconded by Scott.
Yeah.
I'm so glad I got to sit in for the chief.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Do we test the effectiveness of these afterwards?
There are national studies that say they're not effective, but...
No, but can we get something back, an update afterwards, maybe six months?
If Mr. DeMores in six months or so, you can let us know how.
How, six months after it goes up?
Some feedback?
With me, we'll be moving the intersection sign back.
Yeah, I think it's important the signs give enough time for the people to slow down before they go to turn. We'll let you know.
Thank you.
We will.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Don't go yet. Oh.
Almost made it. Almost made it.
Oh, yeah, eight o'clock, no, we can take a five minute break?
Don't, don't, don't...
Don't keep him waiting.
Yeah, don't keep him five minutes, yeah.
What's that?
Andrew?
I have a question. Oh, Wallace and Shirley, flashing signs that no longer flash. There's gotta be a liability there, just like putting up a sign that, we have lights that are no longer functional.
I think we need to find a way to run power to that because the...
Solar is just not working.
Had a battery life.
We had talked about raising the panels and they're, they're still at the same height.
I think it's the battery life, it's the batteries of...
Because the panels are low and the shadows...
I believe in, one of my first weeks on the board, a year ago, that was my same question. And the response from the Public Works was the battery was dead also for lack of sun over the winter.
All right, so if the solar, but I don't know, how, how can you put those solar panels?
Well, you can, you can put them up, but, you know, the, I, I haven't dealt with this personally, but I know we've talked to the vendor about, about that, about raising the panels and, you know, they make all these promises, but it, it's...
It's a lot of trees there, man.
Yeah, they're kind of saying that it's probably not the best application, so...
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm gonna...
In speak, I understand what you're saying with the flashing of the lights, I, I, I'm gonna, I mean, it's always, that intersection was always a, it's a rough intersection, we'll just put it that way. I don't know if the flashing of the lights brings us anywhere close, I mean, people who travel those roads know those roads. And I think they're flashing...
No, we got positive feedback from them when they were...
The flashing lights, I mean...
When they flash, yeah.
I, I, I don't understand how that flashing light, when I'm looking at this big stop sign makes, I, I, I don't understand that, you know, I mean...
Extra attention to it, yeah.
It almost speaks to that every intersection has, that has a stop sign should have a flash or, I mean, I don't know if it, I don't know if it has that...
The difference with not...
I don't know if it has that value.
You have the right of way on that road and that usually, just the way it's laid out, you would think that, that the traffic going up and down the hill would have to stop. It's just, it's just a natural, you know, straight shot.
Okay, just...
I'd like to make a motion that we replace the batteries now in the interim until we find a solution so that during the summer, or at least going forward, it works. And there's a liability there by having traffic signal devices that do that.
You have changed the batteries, right?
Yeah, we, we haven't done it recently, but, I mean, they're not flashing now. I don't know if we have batteries at all.
I'll second the motion then. We need to.
Because that runs off a solar panel, right?
It does, but there are, there are batteries, you know, the solar panel just recharges the batteries.
And, and I don't, and I don't plan to be, know much about solar panels, but my understanding of solar panels also, you have to wash them very periodically or they, or the efficiency of what they bring in changes quite drastically. And I can imagine the winters, salt, the dirt spraying, how often do we actually, do we do clean it, do we, is that part of our maintenance process?
I, I would dare say we probably have never.
We're gonna get pollen too coming in there.
No, but they talked about just how quick it, the efficiency drops very quickly with just a light film on them.
Are they lead acid batteries? Or Ni cats?
Yeah, no, I think they're the little Ni cats, those little square. I, I think, just those little like...
Okay, well, is there any further discussion?
The ones that are there, can they be recharged?
I don't know. Well, I, I don't know if we have a charger, I'm sure they can be recharged, I just don't know if we have.
Following along with that, that may be an option where, I mean, I know it's more work, but maybe we get two sets of batteries and then during the winter months, because I'm sure the cold affects them as well. Where maybe periodically, we take a set out, bring them back to the shop, charge them and, you know, three weeks or a month later, we'll do it again so that we're keeping fresh batteries in there to make up for that lack of solar.
Any further discussion?
And then wash the panels?
See, that's why I take the light off.
Do we have any further discussion on the motion?
Too much work.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous.
All right. Now can I skip?
Yes, I think so, and we'll take a five minute research. Good evening, we are back from a five minute break. And Nick, you had something that you wanted to touch base with on highway safety, I guess?
Well, one, one of the concerns I have is the process, because we, we talk about communications, trying to keep that communications open and I, I look at the length of time that it takes to get things done in general. But I'm looking at some of these things, we had a, we had a request for highway traffic safety in June. A meeting was held in September and it comes before us now in March. It's nearly a year and there's no, no, it's not like, I could understand if they only met biannually or... My request would be that when highway traffic has their meeting and they come out with their recommendations, that it comes before the board and not months afterwards.
One of, one of the things too that we had here is when they met, we were in the budget process, what we were going through at the time, in the budget time. So that's one of the issues, but they...
I'm, I'm your representative to that committee and what you've spoken about is correct. Actions should have been more timely. I offer only one thing in, in defense there. One of the motions we had made at our September meeting needed research. And I, I felt the police department wanted to resolve that research before putting the minutes forward. And then it got further delayed, unfortunately.
But on one issue or on many?
On one, and I, I can only believe they wanted to make the, all the minutes complete rather than submit seven items forward and, and hang one up.
I think the issue, if I'm, if I'm, sorry.
So, I, I did inquire twice as to where were the minutes from the September meeting, because they need to be moved forward to this board. And what prompted it was a sufficient number of other petitions requiring another meeting of the committee. And then once that committee met, all of them came forward very promptly. But the September meetings, the September recommendations were delayed too long.
I, I would recommend that we, we shoot for three standing dates, you know, throughout the year where the committee meets, it's preset, predetermined, and then action is taken. You know, so this way that it'll, and maybe even four, where it'll never go more than three or four months, ever. And if they're standing meetings and you know them well in advance, it, it may alleviate some of that.
Just, just a quick question, if I may. I mean, I'm just looking, another one, this one came in in March of two thousand and ten. Other than one citizen representative, everyone else is a town employee and are on the committee. Is there, is there a reason why when something comes up that, that a, a meeting can't be held within a couple of months to see if any more requests come?
You'll note that the police officer's background investigation on these locations are rather extensive and there may be some time absorbed in doing all of that, the getting the radar setup.
I think that's the point that I was driving at, was that a three, if it was quarterly, a three month wait or even if it was three times a year...
Would help expedite.
Seems like it's reasonable and, and if you set a standing meeting up, you know...
Once a quarter.
Once a quarter, there's really no excuse that, you know, everyone knows about it.
And cancel it if you have no requests.
Right, you know, and at least then we know that everything is being dealt with every three months and we only, and we, well, you know, in this particular case, we might only have one or two a month, I mean, a quarter to deal with.
From the resident's perspective, I make the request in, in March, in June, a police officer shows up, in September...
There's a meeting.
I might get invited, they probably do get invited to the, to the committee meeting.
Yes, they do.
And then in March, a year later, they finally come before the board, so just, you know, that's not very responsive.
This was unusual, lengthy. I don't think they've been that lengthy before.
Usually it's like, in my past experience, it was like twice a year, sometimes three, just this one was just weird.
But, you know, also don't forget, for all these requests, this is information, background and for those requests. So there's a lot, there's a lot of work that's, that's done there too.
Well, I agree, but all of that work was done last year.
No, no, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but I'm just, you know, but I guess we'll make sure that the chief gets that message.
Got it.
All right. Anything else?
Did you want to address, Mr. Chairman, anything under seven A?
No, we're gonna hold off on that until after, after that discussion that we talked about earlier. Okay. Anything else in public?
Need a motion to go to non-public, then?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to go to non-public session according to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, roman numeral two, and this will be D, land.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.